This special session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board table is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Mr. Barlow, would you please call the roll?
Don Barlow, here.
Anne Becker.
Here.
Jean Marvin.
Here.
Deborah Seelinger.
Here.
Gary Smith.
Here.
Mark Schlusner.
Here.
Julie Workman.
Here. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, another God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just as for 2.01, approval of the agenda. This is an action item. Mr. Munoz, are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes. With approval.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Efficient and effective operation. 7.01, approval of Phase Two bid and proposal packages for early childhood addition at Hoover Elementary. This is a briefing item. Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time, I'm going to call Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Facilities, and then he will introduce his other guests that are, will be joining him as well.
Good evening, board members, and thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules to attend this special session. This is a real high priority project for us, and for us to keep it on schedule, we asked that we have this special session to give you the opportunity to review the Hoover project, the addition in IEQ, the Phase Two bidding that we have here. I have with me here tonight Jason Woodhouse, who's from CRW Architects. He's the designer for the project. You know Bill Burt from Construction Services with the district, and Brock Erickson, he's from Knutson Construction, who's the construction manager agent for this particular project. If you remember that on August 1st, you approved the authorization of the sale of participation for the funding for this. It was 4.5 million in facility maintenance bonds and 8.1 million in certificates of bonds for the addition piece. And on September 5th, we brought you Phase One, the competitive bid packages, which were approved at that time. On October 16th, we put out Phase Two bids. This is the more comprehensive part of the project where the Phase One was more of the enclosure piece for the addition, and now Phase Two includes both the IEQ portion and then the substantial completion of the rest of the addition, the interior work. On the Phase Two bid, you'll notice that there were, let's my notes here, that long list of different packages that were bid on. I believe there were, I can't remember, sorry. Eleven different ones. Is that correct?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two? Oh, sorry about that. There were twenty-two. There was at 1.23, but the one we pulled out temporarily is for the boilers. There was nothing against the bid itself. It's just that when we reviewed that, we noticed that there was, we spected only one particular bid there, and then as, through our, one particular model, and through our discussion with the rest of our staff, we thought that we might be able to get a more competitive bid if we opened up the specs a little bit more and reviewed possibly changing the number of models that we put out for. So we're going to bring that back to you probably on December 12th, once we decide what we want to do with that. But the other 22 were all low bid, and those are all listed there as far as what the low bids were for each of those particular packages. We had two packages that were best value. One is the HVAC, which included the plumbing, and the other package was the electrical package. These bids came back on November 15th or 14th, and then on November 15th, we interviewed, or first we blind rated the risk assessment, the expertise in the value enhancements for the HVAC and plumbing, and also the same for the electrical. That was blind rated by facility staff, which means that we didn't know who had proposed that. We just rated them based on those three assessments. Those were turned over to Jackie Mills, who's our purchasing manager. She was the one that managed all the bids and the scoring. Once that was turned in, then we did an interview the following day, on the 15th, with the site supervisor and the project manager of each of the companies that bid, both for the HVAC plumbing and also for the electrical. And we had three from each of those particular best value packages. Then we rated those interviews, provided those numbers to Jackie, who determined the scorings on all of that. She filled out the spreadsheet for you, and then at that time is when we learned what the actual proposal was as far as the costs. And in the end then, for the best value piece of it, it came down to, I'm sorry, who was it again?
DMC and Himek.
Thank you, Bill. Been a long day. DMC and Himek came down with the best for the HVAC, and their cost proposal was $2,592,000. With the electrical piece, McMartin Electra came back, the highest rated, and their base proposal was $797,000. This total package that we're asking you to approve today is $7,184,364. That includes the 22 bid packages, the HVAC plumbing, excuse me, HVAC plumbing best value, and then the electrical best value as well, all that included. As you look through the documentation, you might have some questions as far as where we are budget-wise. We tried to provide you that information in one of the attachments. This is a unique project in that because it's a combined project, and there's two different silos of money. One is the 8.1 million for the addition. That money can only be used for the addition. The other part is the IEQ, that's the facility maintenance bonds. That's the four and a half million that were approved. That can only be used for certain types of things as well. But it's a combined project because we're attaching the two pieces together, and so we had to decide how much do we assess? How much can we legitimately, ethically assess to the addition? How much can we apply to the indoor air quality? We worked through that following the MDE guidelines as best as we can, and we divided them out as best we could, assigning the numbers as you see there. And right now, at the end of this process, we're at $7,508,906 for the addition, where our overall budget's 8.1. And then with the indoor air quality, you'll notice instead of the 4.5 million, we're actually at 5.56891. So we're about a million over on that. I want to try to explain how that kind of works. Facility maintenance revenue, bond, that 4.5 million that we sought to approve, we are going to be paying that back through our long-term facility maintenance revenue anyway. What I mean by that is it's like you're taking a mortgage out on our long-term facility maintenance revenue, and we have to make those payments out of that fund every year for the next 15 years. So if that payment is a half million dollars a year to pay back that 4.5 million in facility maintenance bonds for the next 15 years, that comes off the top of our long-term facility maintenance that we use for all the projects within the district. And so every time we bond, like we did for Churchill, Elton Hills, Pinewood, those bonds are still in place, and we're making the payments on those bonds from our long-term facility maintenance revenue. My point being is that we're either paying over 15 years, or we can pay upfront using long-term facility maintenance revenue. If we could have afforded to pay for the entire Hoover indoor air quality project with long-term facility maintenance revenue, we get about sometimes five, six million dollars a year, and we applied it all to that Hoover project, we could have done that. We wouldn't have any money left over for other projects, but we technically could have done that. So the way I look at it is even though we are a million dollars over, we still are going to apply long-term facility maintenance revenue because we have contingency money built in there on our 10-year plan that we can pull from other projects potentially to apply to this project, to do this project. Secondly, we also anticipate that when we do clarification, which we have scheduled for next month, that we're going to notice some value enhancement, some reductions in some of the costs of possibly in the HVAC plumbing part and the electrical, some savings there. And there are two things that aren't on this particular fund yet that are going to have to be added, just to be very upfront with you. We still don't have that traffic light cost on here, and we're still anticipating that's going to be about $200,000. And then the boiler cost as well is going to have to be added on once we figure out what that is. So those numbers that you see at the end there are going to still increase a little bit. But I wanted to be real transparent and explain to you how this works. That 4.5 million that we bonded for was based on an assessment that was done about nine months ago, and it included a past history of what we've done on other projects. There were some additions here on this project that they couldn't have predicted back when they asked for the 4.5 million. For instance, one example is the earthwork. There was about $500,000 worth of earthwork that had to be done for the indoor air quality piece, because we're, as soon as we start changing size of meters and changing water flows and changing parking lots and all that, then all that work has to be done in order to make everything flow the right way, make sure the soil corrections are done correct. And it's really hard to predict that when you're doing an indoor quality project, nine months, just looking at a building. These are costs that are, like I said, are just hard to predict. And there's others built in here that we added, you could say we added on, like the flooring. We increased the flooring because when we walked through Hoover, we tried to assess, okay, as long as we're doing this project, why don't we take care of some of the flooring issues as well? That wasn't accounted for completely in the 4.5 million dollar assessment that was done nine months ago, and so that cost is a little higher as well. In the end, if you, bottom line, we have 12.6 million total between our 8.1 for the addition and our 4.5. That's 12.6 million, and right now, we're at 465,000 over. But that's with that $400,000 contingency that you see up at the top of $450,000. So we are really close to the end on this project. I think we're sitting pretty good on this project, particularly on the addition piece, is where we're at.
So Scott, did you guys factor in the city has agreed to share half the cost?
Hold on, thank you.
So that'll be another $125,000 reduction because they've agreed to cover half the cost of that.
On the traffic light?
Traffic light.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. I forgot about that. You're absolutely right. So 525, not 200? Right. It's about 250 a light. There were some unexpected permit fees that came up, like what's the one for the water reclamation? Because we increased the size of the water main.
Yep.
You know, that's a $51,000 permit that we have to pay for the city that we couldn't really anticipate, but...
Mr. Smith?
How much of the overrun is, can be attributed to the best value? Because that's not necessarily low cost.
In actuality, the way it turned out in the end, the two lowest cost proposals were actually the highest rated.
So they were also the best value. So we did get, we got best value plus low cost was the same?
We did.
Okay.
Good job.
So you're saying it's the unforeseen, it's the unforeseen cost of tearing into the project, which you realize, oh, we got a problem here. We got to fix this while we're doing it.
I anticipate there will be some of that, yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Well, we've already got, we've already got some of that.
Yes.
I have a question that's a little bit off of this project, but, so we had a $4.5 million bond, which is not quite covering it due to all the reasons that you mentioned. What if you had a higher bond, if you had had a higher bond and you didn't need to use it all, then what would happen to the extra money? Or supposing it was a 4.5 bond, but you only needed, say, 3 million of it?
It's an excellent question. We ran into that actually on our past three projects, is where we had bonded at a certain amount, but it came in well under. We either built that contingency in because we want to, we identify other things that we didn't put in the project, like maybe more flooring, a parking lot potentially, or those higher dollar things that we could add on. Or we can take the excess and just pay back, start paying back the bond.
It has to be used for that particular project or to pay off that.
Yep.
Okay.
I guess my, what can we do, the question, I mean, I obviously support, but what can we do to, on the front end? Are there suggestions that anybody has, the team has, or we can on the front end so we don't find ourselves in this? Because 400,000 is, you know, what, 20%? That's like a 20, I didn't do the math, I can't, it's like 20% over. And I mean, that's a little, that's a little high to miss the, to miss the mark, you know? I can see missing the mark. 20% is a, is that, is that due just to the bidding, or is it because we add this other stuff on that? And I'm not saying we shouldn't, we shouldn't do. I mean, I want to say if it gets things tore up, and like a floor needs to be fixed, we should probably go ahead and fix it now because it will cost us less to do it now than in the long run. But can we do a, is there some process improvement or something we can do on the front end to avoid getting that kind of a surprise, you know, that large of a surprise, I guess? Because it's happened before. It's not the first time it's happened. It's the first time it's happened in a couple of years, but it's happened, it's happened previously. And I guess, you know, I for one would just like if there's something that we should be doing. I mean, I'll leave that to you, you folks decide. You guys, you got to do it. But there are things that we can do to make sure we can, you know, so we can do a little better at hitting the mark. That would be, I think, in everybody's interest, everybody's interest to do that. And I, so I'm just, I guess I'm struggling a bit to figure out, what is the real reason for the 400? Is it because of the stuff we added in on top, or how much is that? And how much is the unforeseen stuff? Once we tore into something, we found out that, oh, it's going to be a little bit more than what we thought. Now we got, we got things, walls opened up and whatever.
I think it's a combination of both of what you're saying.
I'm guessing it probably is, but...
This is the first time since I've been here that we've been over budget. All the other ones have been under.
That's true. I know it's an older school, it's an older schools. I mean, that, that always creates issues that can't see what's behind that curtain until you open the curtain up, but...
Initially, we do a quick walkthrough assessment of door conditions, wall conditions, flooring conditions, and we also base the budget on previous projects like Churchill. So the initial budget had, I think, maybe eight doors figured in to be replaced, but we're actually replacing most of them, just because we're in there touching everything, and now is the time to do it. And so it's things like that, as we started getting into design detail and working through it all and being onsite more, we kind of discovered more and more conditions that would, you know, make sense to do it now versus later as a change order maybe during the project. This way you get competitive bidding on those, that scope of work.
Okay. So it kind of blows the initial budget, but it's just, but in terms of overall value and cost of, in taking care of business, I guess.
Right.
But we're also still, we're dealing with two separate things, right? Because there was the 8.1 million that was originally budgeted for the addition, and that came in a little bit underbid, is that correct?
Right now, it's at seven and a half million, yes.
Okay. You know, and, but then there's the other separate one that Mr. Smith was referencing, where it came in more than you had expected.
Yes.
So I guess thinking, moving forward, could we, you know, the walkthrough we do, do, come up with the number we think versus once we have the project going and then we walk through again and decided, wow, we're in here, let's do all the doors instead of just eight of them? Could, moving forward, could we do that second walkthrough the first time versus, you know?
And that's what I was curious on, is what's the delta here in between what the initial thought was and what the final thought is? You know, that's where the mark was truly missed here, so I'd personally be real curious to hear what that delta is and what that equates to from a bid package point of view.
Well, when we start these, the IEQs at least, we always go back, look at the previous change orders and try to incorporate as much of that as we can into the original design. And what was different about this one was the timeframe, because the IEQ was scheduled for another year, and we pulled that forward. And we based that price on the attachment sevens, and that really just looks at the electrical HVAC, that type of stuff. But then when we added the addition, we're adding the parking lot, and then we have to rip up part of the parking lot to put new sewer and stuff in, which we went and needed for that, just the IEQ. And so there was, that was the unknown that most likely put it over by a little bit, was combining the two and not really seeing the mess that's in between.
Weren't these originally bid at the same time, and the entire design process was, yes, they're separate projects, but it was known to be done at the same time?
Yes, that's true.
So it's a little hard to imagine that it's an unknown when it's part of the project.
Oh. Correct me if I'm wrong, they bonded prior to the design. So we bonded the 4.4 million for the IEQ prior to actually getting into the design and stuff. So we can't design before the bond.
So the process was here, bonding before the design?
Yep. And we can't design before the bond, really.
We were trying to expedite because of the seasonality, the seasonality of construction in the school and all that, so we get, we get ourselves caught in that. It sounds we got to cut.
I guess, I think it's hard to predict the unpredictable things, but I think the example you gave, like, we're going to do eight doors, and then when we got in, we figured while we're in, why don't we just do all of them? I think those kind of things, maybe moving forward, we can capture those.
Yes.
But some of the unforeseen things, like Mr. Smith said, sometimes until you actually move the curtain, you don't know what some of those costs are. And I don't, the timing of the bonding does, is backwards, I agree, but that's just, I think that's the way you have, you know, do you do the upfront cost of all the work? You got to be able to pay for that as well.
I'm just wondering if we use our experience in this, because Don, like I said, it's the first time, Scott, that you've been having, it's happened some other times. We looked at our experiences where we've been over, and it hasn't been that many. If we looked at those and analyzed that, maybe that's something we build in as a factor into these things, you know, as an assumption in cost overruns, because we do have some experience where it's happened before. As long as, as long as we know we're following the same process, it seems like we could then put that in, you know, as a contingency, if you will, kind of a contingency to the project. The idea is just so we can get closer, closer. I don't, you know, I don't want to beat anybody up, but that's not, that's not the point here. We got to do what's right for the schools and students. It's just a matter of, maybe the real issue is back to, you know, we got to have, we're asked to bond before we have the design. We maybe have to put you on a little more of a microscope at that point to figure out, you know, the preliminary costs, are we, are we sure we're going to be, do we have enough in there in case we find something like we found before? Have we accounted for anything like that? I don't know. Maybe that's on, be on us to maybe ask those questions the next time.
Well, we could just build a little cushion in the amount that you're bonding for, just in worst case scenario.
My guess is, I thought we had one in there. I thought we had one in there, is my guess.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you. You know, I guess I just wanted the assurance that you utilize best practices and that this is not a reflection of a corner being cut or a trying to beat the system. You use the industry standard, and you always have best practices in mind. And with having heard that, I think I'm certainly accepting of the reality that, as you've shared, and thank you.
Ms. Becker?
Just another thought. I mean, how much, you know, going back to the example about the doors. It's like, well, you know, maybe we only can actually pay for the eight doors. And yes, maybe it would be nice if we could do all 25 of them or however many there are, but, well, this is what our budget is, so we just do the eight. And, you know, if you did the walkthrough and you thought, well, you know, the rest of them are okay, we're just going to, we're just going to have to leave them. And they're just going to have to be on whatever regular cycle they're on, and they're just on their cycle. And, you know, so I know you're in there and looking at stuff, but it's like, you know, if you have to make choices, maybe you just don't make it a bigger project than it, than you initially thought. Just as another way of looking at it, not, you know, not putting an extra cushion in there, because I think we've already, you know, I'm assuming there is a cushion. But maybe just say, well, that's, we got to stick to what we're going to do.
So going off of what Ms. Becker just said, was there any advantage to doing, financial advantage then to doing all the doors now as opposing, as opposed to doing the rest of the doors later? I mean, would it cost more if we did them later rather than?
Yeah, during the bidding process, you get the advantage of competitive bidding from multiple bidders. Once you're into the project under construction, then you're kind of limited to the one contractor on the site. And we're still watching those dollars and making sure if they did a change order, they'd be appropriate, but, but the thought was you recognize some of that savings during competitive bidding. So...
If I may, once again, to be clear in my mind then, was there a, beyond the eight doors, what condition did you discover that caused you to believe that, you know, we need to go ahead and knock all of them out at this time? Was there something that you saw or just forward-thinking, this would be a nice time to do this? Was there a condition that you saw, or just to help me understand the decision?
Sure. No, it's a variety of, you know, some rooms changed function a little bit, so you had to change hardware. So as you're changing hardware, why not, I guess, put the new door on? There's some, some sense to that. Others, as you noted, as we started digging into details, you noticed that some of the veneers is delaminating, that we didn't see on our initial quick walkthrough. So it's just kind of more detailed observation as you're in there looking at what you're doing with the facility.
Mr. Smith?
Well, you know, I just, somebody said, caused me to ask this question. So did we find, because we competitively bid, we have to work with the bidders that get the contract, and we decide to do the doors and add more doors, then they tell us what the price of that door is going to be, and that price may be different than the door that they bid on the, when we did the bid?
Correct.
Did we find some significant increases in, from that process that we've found where we're now doing doors that, you know, door that costs, I don't know what they cost, $3,000, $4,000, whatever, per door, that they went from four to six or four to five, or was it?
No, because it...
There wasn't anything like that, where did we get the same price for the doors?
You actually probably get a volume discount if the more doors you do.
Okay. We didn't find, so we didn't find anything in there that, we saw the competitive bidders that once were into the project, and now we've added some things, you know, to some change orders, that the pricing per unit went up substantially?
You're talking previous projects, or?
Well, I'm talking about this one, because, you know, you said, I thought you said that when we decided to do the, go to eight to 25 or whatever, at least I assume from what your comment was, that we had to go back to the bidder on those doors and say, we need 16 more doors or whatever now, and so give us the price for those doors and...
Sure. Actually, the initial, the eight I mentioned was in that initial budget we did for the bond request. So it wasn't a number that was bid by contractors.
Okay.
But now the more that we have, that was part of the overall bid.
Financially, are we, were able to?
Yeah, I think, I think we're fine. I think moving forward, we may look at how, and if the board would like, there's things that we can, you know, for example, the flooring. That's something that originally wasn't part of the plan, but once we thought we're in, it's going to need to be replaced down the road, so why not make it part of the deal and get a better price now than two years from now, we want to bid just the floor? So there's some things that we could... So there's some things that we could look at in there that we can say, you know what? We're just not going to do those right now that would bring that gap down a little bit.
I guess, as far as I'm concerned, I, you know, I think we gotta do a better job of doing it. But in it, I think we should, we're to rent it, we might as well do it right and make it right, spend the extra money to do that. But I guess, before I would say we, actually, I just, are we gonna, are we, what are we doing financially here? Is this, does our, we have the wherewithal to do this? Is this going to put a crimp, crimp on our capital budgeting? Is it going to make us forego other projects that we have, that we have planned for next year that we might have to? But you think we have, we have the, the means to do this, in other words?
Yeah, with our 10-year plan, you know, we're allowed a certain amount of money each year. And then we present that 10-year plan to the board. But like I've always said, that's a fluid document where something might pop up, like the water heaters at Mayo popped up this last year as a $150,000 project, unexpected project. So we took the long-term facility maintenance revenue and, and unfunded project and took that money from a different project to pay for it. When we do our 10-year plan, I hate to use the word fluff, but we build in contingencies. Like we have parking lots on the schedule, but parking lots are so iffy. I know we, maybe we have a half million dollar for a century parking lot, but, for this year. But we, as it goes on, it's not deteriorating as quickly as we thought. Maybe we can push it to next year, so that frees up that half million dollars that now we can use for the water heater at Mayo that we were, unexpected. Or a compressor at John Marshall where the cooling compressor or for the chiller. All these different things, it's kind of, I'd hate to call it a shell game, but it's...
They're all needs. You plan for all the needs, it's just that sometimes things come up and you have to...
Exactly.
You have to take, forego something in order to take care of the immediate need.
Triage.
Yeah.
Thank you, and it goes back to your point that we're in this building, it's torn apart, everything's out of it. Why not take advantage of that opportunity to make it right, make it nice, like the past projects that we've done?
That makes sense to me.
I'll, I'll jump into the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Eulinger.
So clarifying question, several, several. But what I'm hearing you saying is this was particularly of a challenge because we're dealing with an existing building and an additional building, correct?
Very complex, yes.
So you have, very complex. I'd also like to, you know, reiterate the point that we're dealing with some complicated funding sources, which, you know, we're all trying to grasp between the borrowing and the, what's in your facilities maintenance revenue and things like that. So I feel like this is really kind of maybe put you all to the test a little bit. So I appreciate your work on that. I think, I, I feel like we're getting slightly bogged down with the number of doors because honestly, I don't think the number of doors is putting us over budget. I think the things like Mr. Burt mentioned about the parking structure and moving the, the grading that we're far beyond what anyone would know. And just my clarifying point is the IAQ bid nine months ago, or, right, is it bid nine months ago? Is that the correct terminology? That would be our future product, project, would have been our future project, project two years from now, about?
I think it was summer of 18. We just moved it up to summer.
So we moved it up one year, so we were going to do that piece of the project, that project anyway. And what I also believe I heard you say is, as we've done these IAQ projects and seen the overages, we've said, okay, we looked at Churchill, we did this, these were, we ran over, we're going to build that into next time, correct?
Correct.
So I appreciate you taking the time to kind of look forward thinking as we move forward with this similar type project. So that was really my comments for now, but thank you for your work.
I'd like to move to action.
Second. This item has been, we need to, okay. All those, all those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now it's an action item. Be it resolved, okay.
Resolve that Julie has her glasses out.
Be it resolved and I get my glasses out so I can, I can read the words, all these little numbers in the line. Okay, be it resolved at the School Board of Independent School District, 535. Approved bid packages 1A, 3B, 4B, 5C, 5D, 6A, 8A, 8C, 9A, 9B, 9C, 9D, 9E, 10A, 10B, 11A, 21A, 23B, 23C, 23D, 25A, and 27A. And best value proposal packages 22A and 26A in the amount of $7,184,364 for the early childhood addition and indoor air quality project at Hoover Elementary.
Second.
All those in favor, please?
I have a question.
You have a question, sorry.
Just one, one more clarifying question. So is this everything now for this project? So we got some things we still?
The boiler.
The boilers.
The boiler and the traffic light.
For sure.
And whatever else.
And, 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 and so we know the, the traffic light will be about 125,000 more? The boilers are?
It was originally bid at about 200. We're hoping to get about, up to a 50% saving depending.
So it could be as much as 325,000 more?
Yes.
I think, just, I just want to make sure when we vote, we understand what we're going. So you come back here again, you know, we aren't...
Going what?
We aren't going what, you know, you know, we talked about this and, you know, you're, you know, I just want to make sure we got that, so...
I, I really appreciate you making that point. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you so much for all your work. It's a complex project and then you have to sit in front of us and try and explain it so that we can understand it. So I, I very much appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
7.02, approval of revisions to the Policies and Procedures Manual. This is a briefing item. Vice Chair Marvin?
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Munoz, Mrs. Workman, and I worked on the policies. There are 14 of them. I'd like to go through them quickly. And if you have questions, perhaps you can just raise your hand, Mrs. Workman or Mrs. Becker. Mr. Munoz can tell me to stop and they can answer your questions. 503.3 is the exception to attendance. The difference here is that exceptions to attendance will be considered on a case-by-case basis by the Executive Director of Elementary and Secondary Education, not the Assistant Superintendent. There's also language there that directs people to look at the Minnesota State High School League transfer bylaws. So if students change school after starting ninth grade with an exception to attendance, they'll be ineligible to participate in varsity sports for a year. 522, the student sex non-discrimination policy includes MSBA language, which makes it more inclusive, and it designates the Executive Director of Human Resources as its Title IX Coordinator and Human Rights Officer. 524, Internet Acceptable Use and Safety Policy. This remains the same, except it includes a revised Minnesota statute involving school-student bullying policy. 602, organization of schools' calendar and school day just adds to Minnesota statute for voluntary pre-K programs. 614, school testing plan and procedure. Only change here is that No Child Left Behind becomes Every Student Succeeds Act. 618, assessment of student achievement, remains unchanged but adds six Rochester policy as cross-references. 619, about staff development standards. The only change is the language NCLB becomes ESSA. 701, establishment and adoption of the school district budget. This one now states that until the school board adopts a budget for the subsequent year, the budget cannot be encumbered or new employees cannot be hired without specific approval of the board. However, the Executive Director of Finance can enter and approve services or supplies that require a lead time of more than 60 days, and he has the authority to do that for orders up to $100,000. 706, acceptance of gifts and donations stipulates that any single gift or donation over $100,000 needs to be presented to the school board, who will determine whether or not to accept it. 707, transportation of public school students. It spells out the way, the distance between the student's residence and his or her school is by walking distance, not as the distance a crow flies, or I guess any other bird. Also talks about pickup and drop-off guidelines. Establishes that adults may not ride school buses without district authorization. It also provides guidelines for students on exception to attendance or childcare, and it states how the district will protect and manage a student who is brought to the bus in an agitated state that may put other students or the bus driver in danger. 713, student activity accounts. Business office will provide the board with a, an annual account rather than semi-annual. 800, waste reduction and recycling. Our district is now ensuring that printer cartridges and duplicate cartridges are going to be greener than they've ever been before. 806, crisis management. Again, language from NCLB to ESSA. And 903, visitors to school district buildings and sites ensures that students who are enrolled in post-secondary enrollment option courses may have reasonable access to park at school properties and use the computer and other technology resources so they can complete their PSEO coursework.
Less than four minutes, congratulations. Any questions, board members? It's amazing you went through those so fast and it took us quite a lot more time to discuss them.
It did.
So our next policy meeting is on December 18th. And I think, as I mentioned last time, we will be looking to set a regular monthly meeting and start, start going through the, the policy systematically. One of the things that I brought up is that on the, on the policies that we've been doing, we've simply been looking at any changes, either deletions or additions or legal language. So what we hope to do is go through the entire, each policy more thoroughly to see that, do we really want to keep this language that's been, been there for however long before? So anything else? Mr. Munoz?
Just FYI, we will have a superintendent listening post on November 30th from 11:30 to 1 o'clock here in the boardroom. And then on December 5th, before the Truth and Taxation Meeting from 4:00 to 5:45, we're gonna have an open house for the Golden Hills Time Capsule and share what we found in the Time Capsule and then have a brief program probably around 5 o'clock. But we will get that information out here in the near future.
We have another meeting, or you have another thing on, on November 30th, the Sunset Terrace?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, yeah, the...
Envoy.
Envoy, if, if parents want to go learn about envoy, the training that we're giving our teachers. It is November 30th at Sunset Terrace. I think dinner starts at 5:30, program starts at 6:00. Childcare will be provided. And it's also an opportunity not only to learn about envoy, the training our staff, but it's also, as a parent, some of these strategies you can use at home with your children. So I think this will be a great opportunity. It's, it's, it's one of the parent engagement activities from Sunset Terrace, but it's open to all of our families.
This meeting is adjourned at 6:13 PM.